Called order, the special call meeting, Paintsville City Council, Wednesday, February 17th, 2016. Clark, call the roll, please.
Bill Mike.
Here.
Tommy, David.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Sean.
Any additions or corrections to the meeting of 1/18/2016? So the minutes.
I got one thing. On that, down there, I worked on the pay the bills last time. It says I didn't vote. I voted yes, okay, but I just voted the way that I, and I'm gonna vote that way again tonight as the bill is presented. So I'm gonna vote yes. I want to know that I voted yes, okay. And it says I didn't vote, but I did.
Okay.
I didn't hear it.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's my break. I just wanted to, I just wanted to correct that. I mean, I thought you did.
All right.
Does he want the correction of minutes?
I just wanted to correct that. I said as the bill is as presented.
No. Does he want last time's minutes corrected?
Yes.
Yes.
We're gonna have a motion to correct them.
Have a motion to correct the minutes, please.
I'm so moved.
Can we have a second?
I guess I'm second.
Yeah, you can say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any, and to motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
So moved. Second.
In favor? Opposed? Any questions or comments concerning departmental reports?
Make a motion we approve. Second.
All in favor?
I vote no on that, too, like I did last month.
Any, let's see, Jim votes.
What Sarah voted, I didn't hear.
She, I think she voted yes, did. Can we have a motion to pay the bills, please, as presented?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The only announcement I have is that I would like to wish Kim Blanton the speed of recovery. She's had gallbladder surgery about a week and a half ago, and she's on the mend, and we're looking forward to getting her back, hopefully by Monday, and I want to commend Jamie on the job that she's been doing in Kim's absence. Thank you, Jamie, keeping us going down there at City Hall. The first item of business is the opening of bids on surplus vehicles. We have, we advertised four, was it?
We take the eight.
Four vehicles. We have a bid on one of those vehicles and no bids on the other three. And the bid is on the Ford tractor, and we have a bid from, a single bid from Ronald Blanton for $1,280. We had placed a minimum $1,000 bid on that equipment, and I talked to Joe earlier today, and he said if we received a bid that met the minimum, he would recommend that we accept it. So, can we have a motion, please, to accept that bid?
I'll make a motion we accept that bid. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item of business is discussion of 911. Last meeting, council asked me to send a letter to fiscal court requesting that they add 20% to the landline 911 fee for the county residents. After reviewing the materials concerning 911, the revenue numbers and so forth, I didn't do that. And the reason I didn't do that is because I discovered that the agreement we have with the county has now expired. We had an agreement, a 20-year agreement that was signed back in 2001 that...
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, excuse me. And that agreement required the city to manage the 911 and the system and to cover all losses associated with that. So we've been meeting, I met with the judge a couple days ago, and what I, basically, our discussion, my discussion, part of the discussion was that, of course, that the agreement's expired, and he agreed with that, and that we cannot, we being the city, cannot continue to absorb those losses on behalf of the city and county, and that we need to figure out a new agreement of some sort. And the purpose of this being on the agenda tonight is just to talk about it, see what y'all think about it, see where you think we ought to go. I have some numbers. The Chief Holbrook and Chief Ratliff and Gary McClure and myself have met and talked about the operations of 911. We've looked pretty closely at several things. The thing that is possibly most telling about where we're going with 911 is that in 2012 we had, we collected in phone service fees from landlines. In 2012, we collected $193,000. Into, excuse me, 2013, it jumped up a little bit to $205,000. 2014, it backed down to $198,000. And then last year, ending June 30th, 2015, we collected $162,000. So in a couple-year period there, it dropped about 20% what we're collecting in landline The wireless fees that we collect have stayed pretty steady. At 2012, $126, 2013, $125, in 2014, $142, in 2015, $131. That $142 was because the state won a lawsuit and had some back pay from some cellular providers, and we got an additional amount of money that year, in 2014, from their settlement. So basically, we're around $130,000, and that's staying about where it is and maybe going up some. Landlines are in a free fall. So last year, our revenues went to $293,000, whereas they had been running in the $330, $340, $350,000 range over the previous three years. So where do we go with all this? The opinion of the judge, and I'm not trying, and I don't want to speak for him, he certainly is capable of speaking for himself, was that you're wasting your time if you're gonna try to make up our losses on landlines, because they're going away. As the younger generations come along and the older generation's going away, landlines are going away. So it would be that probably to keep up in landlines, you'd have to raise that percentage every year to offset the losses that you'd be experiencing. And I'm just talking, y'all, y'all wait in if you want to say something. What we have looked at is additionally is there are some counties that are now switching to a fee on occupied residences that they're putting on the tax, the property tax bill. Don't know if that's a good solution or not, but it's what some people are doing. Some people have actually, have actually attached a fee to the electric bills rather than the phone bills. Some of these things are a little shaky, whether they're probably gonna stand up or not. Jeff, you have an opinion from Campbell County?
Yeah, I found a Kentucky Supreme Court opinion that was rendered in October 2015. It's not yet final, but it did uphold its constitutional and valid imposition of an annual service fee on all commercial and residential units in the county of $45. So that was found to be valid by the Supreme Court. That's the one case I found.
Yeah. So what do y'all think? And I asked the judge to get with the county commission and to talk to them about it, and to talk to the county attorney, and suggested that possibly we need to get together and just either have a joint meeting, or he and I can get together, he can talk to his folks, or I'll talk to our folks, and we'll see where we are. Y'all got any thoughts on all that?
I think we need a joint meeting, you know, and everybody got there on the table, you know, what their ideas are, you know, because we're gonna have to work it out with them. On that, let me ask you this question, Bobby. Is 911 usually operated by most counties or cities? I'm just curious. I mean, from around us in the local.
In the local area, we're the only one that I know of, at least in the Johnson-Floyd. I'm not sure how McGoffin does theirs. Floyd and Pike, Prestonsburg does their own, and Floyd County goes through the state police dispatching. I think it's the same way in Pike, but is that right, Gary? Do you know how Martin County and...
Well, they've got their local dispatch, but when they dial 911, it pretty much goes closed.
They are getting ready to install their new system.
Okay, they don't, that's right, they don't have really all the updated equipment at this particular time.
Right, they're not an E-911 like you are.
Yeah.
And McGoffin County is, they have, the county has theirs, and they're currently upgrading theirs right now, too.
Do they serve the city as well?
Yes.
As you know, back when this thing was originated, Mayor John David Preston was involved in that, as well as Judge Gail Gillum, and they decided, for whatever their reasons were at the time, and I think they were probably pretty valid decisions, that the city, that it would be difficult to jointly manage a, anything, because somebody's gotta, somebody has to say yes or no. You gotta have somebody that makes the call. It'd be difficult if there's a major problem and you had to call somebody and discuss it, and y'all disagreed, and the 911 system runs very well. I have no objection if the county manages or the city manages. Doesn't matter to me. But we've got to, in my view, at the worst case, we've got to split these losses. If somebody can figure out a better way to run it, that suits me just fine. The large majority, somewhere over 90%, of the expenses involved in 911 are either employee-related or their telephone expenses. That's really about what you got.
I don't think everybody agrees it's absolutely necessary.
I can't see how we can go backwards without it. And in order to sustain it, I don't see how we can do without the counties, you know, being involved in it some way, even if we do run it like it is now, we still have to have the money, you know, to sustain it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So we can't do it without the county helping us sustain it, is what I'm saying.
Right, absolutely, you can't, because you got the same overhead virtually, whether you're doing it for yourself or whether you're doing it for us and them.
But if we put a fee on something, you know, like you was talking about, it may be something we all may have to consider.
Yeah.
How many employees do they have calling?
We've got eight.
Currently, eight.
Eight employees. You know, the issues of could we run it more efficiently, I guess? The only way we could, we're running the early morning hours with one dispatcher at this particular time. Pretty much the rest of the time, we have two. We never have more than two, right, Gary?
Just in a disaster.
Yeah, except in the case of a disaster. Running that operation, as you can imagine, with one person is, if somebody had got sick or, you know, something happened and they were there with themselves, you know, they deal with the, I guess, going to the restroom and trying to get them about to eat and things the best they can, but it's very, it'd be very difficult to have, next to impossible, it wouldn't work to have one dispatcher during a very busy time. You know, you can look at the number of calls.
Now, how does that work?
We, well, it's...
I'm sure it varies.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sure it varies.
Yeah, it does. In the last six months, we've had about 10,000 calls. That were what we call catted calls, that went on the cad. Now, there's other calls, too, to the administration line and so forth for various people asking a question, things that don't end up going into the computer. And you start dividing that up and saying, well, how many calls per hour do you get? Well, you know, it's, it's not so many that one person couldn't handle it if that's the way it came in. But you never know, you might, it's kind of like the ambulance service. You might get no calls for two hours and then 10 in 10 minutes. So it's, and if you got somebody...
Then you stop serious things, and then you...
Yeah, if you got somebody on the line trying to, in a serious car wreck or something like that, you can't lay it down and say, hey, I'll be back to you in just a minute.
See, that's another reason I think it's gotta stay in this county. I don't want it coming out of the state police barracks where they're trying to ride through a four count.
Oh, I don't need it.
Well, even if it did, you know, they would charge us, we'd have to pay them a fee.
Well, I don't want it. We need to sustain somewhere. What's the status on increases in, I know they've been at this down there in the legislature, but have you had, are there updates from League of Cities or any of them, maybe some?
For four or five years in a row, this has been a major emphasis of the League of Cities to try to get some relief on this cellphone charges. And this year, I haven't heard a word. This year, I have not heard a word.
Well, they've voted down, ain't they?
They've consistently, consistently not let it out of committee. Yes, Virginia?
I made a call this afternoon, and I was told there is gonna be one that they expected to be filed.
There's, what did I say?
There is one that they expect that will be filed before the end of the season.
A bill? No telling, you know, it's, there's been one every year, and it hasn't really, I don't even, I don't know if anyone's gotten to the floor for a vote.
I don't think so. They've never made it out of committee so far, but the CMRS board is in full support of the changes that you are, and they know that they're necessary. They're working hard towards that goal.
The bill last year was, they was asking for an increase from 70 cents monthly to a dollar. And of course, like I said, it never made it to the floor for a budget. You start talking about 25 cents, you start talking like that, it's the state of Kentucky.
Well, you know, it sounds like a lot, but what, that's about a 30% increase on, for us, on the $125,000, so we'd take in an extra $75,000, probably wouldn't even cover our losses, it would help.
People should contact their legislators if it's something that you all are interested in, and let them know that you feel that that would be important, that increase, or maybe a larger one.
I'm sure we're not the only county.
No.
I mean, only nine of us are experiencing this deficit, so everybody needs to send their message to the legislature.
If they don't hear you all say that and bother them about it, they're not gonna address it.
So we'll...
What about even drafting a letter from the city and the whole council, sign it, and send it to our legislators? You know what I'm saying? We'll...
Good idea, good idea. We'll do that. I'll get it drafted and get it to you all and to sign, and we'll get it, we'll get it right out to them.
So our city government incurs all the expenses of 911? Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And the county government?
Well, let me, now, let me restate, let me restate that. Our losses, not all the expenses, the phone, landline fees.
That's what losses are.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're paying for it, then you don't get enough back to take care of it.
Yeah, we lost $81,000, I believe the audit showed last year, in the year ending June 30th, 2015. The usage between city and county is fairly close. Probably a little heavier in the county than in the city.
Now, what do you mean?
The number of calls.
Like 60/40?
55/45.
Okay.
It's a little hard to tell, because you get into gray areas, like Rick and I were talking the other day, you get into gray areas like an accident in town that we send ambulances to, maybe a county resident, and it's kind of hard. We just pick them up and take them to the hospital, and it's kind of hard to know whether it's a city or county call, you know.
Well, I would personally like to get together with all the fiscal court members and Judge Daniels, and all of us get together, and let's just sit down and get this thing ironed out.
Well, we'll, I'll get with him, and we'll, and we'll try to set a meeting that's convenient to everybody. Hard to do sometimes, but we'll give it the best shot and try to set up a joint meeting, and y'all can be thinking about it in the meantime, what you, where you think we ought to go with this thing. We'll try to do some more research into alternative ways of financing that some of the other cities have done, try to get it up, and we'll try to get the letter prepared to send out to our representatives and senators, and do what we can. Okay? Next item is approval of hazard mitigation generator project. And Virginia's gonna take over for that.
Okay. Kentucky Emergency Management just called the other day, it was about the 20th of January, and they had extra funds left over from a disaster that we had received, our other generators that we got from the city. And they told me that if I could quickly put an application together for them, they might have some money for us for generators. We could only spend it for generators, and it could only be in town. And the county, we got the same call for the county, so they also got an opportunity to send in applications. So Gary went to his list of critical facilities that have told us that they are interested in a generator, and he spoke with the mayor, and the two facilities that were on the list next were Paintsville Utilities Administration Building and the Mountain Manor Nursing Home. And I have already actually completed those applications because I had to work around and submitted them. We don't know yet if they're gonna be awarded. This will be at no cost to the city, there is a 13% match, but Utilities has provided the mayor with a letter that they will make their match, and the nursing home has provided the mayor with a letter that they will make their match. So all you all is, you're just the conduit for them to get these resources. And I just wanted that to, I don't need anything other than you all to just someone make a motion that you all support that and let it be reflected in the minutes that you are aware of the applications.
All right. Can we have a motion to that?
Well, I guess we could also say that if they're awarded, you could sign all the documentation without me having to come back to the council.
Okay. We can make a motion of support for this application for these two generators and authorize the mayor to sign the documentation to complete those projects if approved.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four is funding commitment for Carter Lane. As y'all are aware, Virginia, have you passed out those?
No.
Why don't you go ahead and pass out your sheets? As y'all are aware, we entered into an application for FEMA funding to repair the slip and buy the homes at Carter Lane. As part of, as part of that project, which is about a, roughly a couple-million-dollar project.
How much?
Couple-million-dollar project, the city, the terms of the agreement call for a 13% match from the city. And that match is something we knew was gonna have to be something we dealt with at some point in time, and now they're asking us to tell them how we're gonna make that match. And what you're looking at is, you're looking at two options for city funding commitment. One is will require cash of $138,357. We've got several items on there that are in kind matches at the top of the page. We wanted to do what we could to offset the total match, which is $334,357. But if we can, but if we can do the items at the top of the page ourselves, we'd still require $138,357 in cash under option number one. Option number two is a little different. It would require the, basically the same, except it would require the individual property owners to donate the 13% of the, of the...
The praise value.
Praise value or the funding value that they would receive. They would have to, they would have to donate 13% of that back to offset these, the city's match requirement. As you see at the bottom, the number's the same, $334,000, that the city be required to match, but under that scenario, the city would come up with $37,295 in cash, the property owners would come up with $101,062, would not, in effect, I'm hoping, come out of their pocket, but would come out of the funds that they receive for their home. I was struck by the fact that, I don't know if y'all watched YMT last night, but there was a, there was a lady who had a similar problem.
That's on, that's on. That's about Fall Road.
Her house was, house was coming off the hill. The slips reminded me a lot of some of the slips I've seen around here, and she was, she was kind of begging for help, and there wasn't any help to be had for her. And I thought how fortunate we are if we can get, if we can complete this project, because it doesn't happen very often, that you can get, get help with these kind of, with slips. So anyway, any comments or thoughts on all this?
Where did the estimates come from option one? Where the calculations?
What calculations?
Who calculated these?
The engineer. Does the engineer fit the value to the work?
Yeah, some of those things, Jim, are not, they're taken from allowable numbers that the engineer, you know, that government allows you for certain types of things that you do, I guess. Does that, that make sense, Virginia?
Some of it's based on equipment rates that are acceptable by FEMA.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say.
Not necessarily a market value type valuation, it's just what they say you can, this is what you can use for this.
Yeah, and you'll notice that there is an engineering design lot item, that's number five on your overall budget. That's because this has only been preliminarily engineered, meaning that once this is funded, an engineer will actually do the design for mitigating the problem, which is removing the slide material. So these are an engineer's best guess, based on the information they have, without actually doing the engineering, because we, of course, couldn't pay for an engineering job like that ahead of the grant. We wouldn't have the funds to do that. So the preliminary engineering has been completed, and that's how all these numbers came about.
Estimates, basic ones.
Yeah, they are, they're all estimates. And actually, the project has decreased about thirty, forty thousand dollars from when we started, because some lot items have been removed. One of my greatest concerns was the environmental piece that would be required, and we've already passed that. We've already had environmental clearance, and they've removed the archaeological survey requirements, and they removed the BAT survey requirements. So all those things have already been taken away. So none of that, we've already received environmental clearance, and I anticipated that would take another six months from now before we'd ever see that, so.
How many properties have called, do you know?
There are eight structures, and there is one vacant lot, and the vacant lot is necessary in order for them to mitigate the slide. That's why...
It's where the, it's where the, yeah.
Um, can you describe where that vacant lot is?
Yeah, it's a Craigmont property above Dale's house, I guess, up that holler there, where the actual slips...
Hillside.
Started, or where they are.
Hillside.
To Hillside, that's where it's, that property was owned by Bill Martin and Bob Conley and Tom Govitt, their heirs now own that property, yeah.
And they have been very cooperative. Because sometimes I'm worried about, you know, when you have a whole bunch of people in one property, but they are all very much in support of it and willing to go along with the project.
This is not one, probably aren't going to give a hundred and one thousand, this is a total of all the property owners. Validating back that thirteen percent.
Like if I was going to write you a check, it would be less than thirteen percent for each owner. And those are the appraised values that was, that was actually done by an appraiser, certified appraiser, actually appraised all the properties pre-event. Pre-event appraisal, meaning they were valued at what they would be worth before this slide happened to them.
Now, is that all the, the value that they appraised that home at, the full value of that home getting property?
The appraised value, yes.
Yeah, with no, with no damage, Debbie. I mean, as if everything was just fine, yeah.
If we go, if you go with this option two, landlords have to agree with it, right?
Yes, they do.
Maybe lose about twenty-eight thousand.
Do you have any input on that?
They have, they all know about it, except for there was one property owner we haven't been able to reach yet, but we'll try to reach them tomorrow, and Dale helped, talked to them about it. And, you know, I can't tell you if they're collectively for it or against it. You'll have to, they're here, most of them, I think.
If they're against it, well, what do we do then?
Um, you have option one, or I'm, I'm open to option three, if anyone knows what that is. You know, if there's a third option, I'm happy to, happy to find it, you know? I will say that this is, this isn't an unusual thing. Pike County has had a couple of these in the last few years, and they did the thirteen percent donation as well, because they just simply didn't have the cash to put into the project. So, you know, but it, it is something that we're going to have to come to answer on pretty quickly.
How do, how do you all feel about it?
You're all filming.
You're involved in it, what you want to do?
Twenty-eight thousand can go a big way in moving.
Because this is what happens, I mean, everything we've got, everyone's going to change it for us.
Well, the question, yeah, the question, you know, the, the two options, what's happening is, is either the taxpayers are going to pay it, or the property owners are going to pay a portion of it, and...
Because we're still going to have to pay something to the city.
Yeah, yeah, even after that, it's thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. You know, it's, well, I know, I know if I were the property owners, how, what I would say is that, yeah, we don't want to pay that. But on the other hand, I don't know what all the other taxpayers of the city, I don't know if they would want to pay it either. So it's a tough call, it really is. It's a question that we just need to, we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to have to answer it. If we, if we have to have a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand cash, where do we get it? You know, does it, do we borrow it and pay it back over time? Of course, that, that amount probably wouldn't come all at once. It would come over, over some amount of time. So I don't...
Does the city have any type of insurance that we want other than...
No. No, that, that old slip and slide's tough to get insurance for somewhere.
And what would we do about being able to get access to that home and get our belongings now? Because we can't get a full suspect of the law right now.
Good point. I'd have my, I'd have my belongings to this deal, probably, you know? I mean, I know you've got things you can't replace, but there may be...
It's possible to increase that, we'll have to see what, we have to get past this stage and see what, if there's any more to go.
That's a good question, Debbie. I don't know.
We can't walk away from that thing with not money or no money. I mean, we worked, we worked a hell of a lot.
Well, if you had a, if you, and I'm going to guess, Jim, you may not worry about this for me, if you had a big dozer up there doing work, they might be able to get you out of there.
Well, I can take a dozer for the road in there, of course, they can get everything and all that other, I can, from what I've seen up there.
Good for you. That's great.
Now, how long it stay that way, we don't know.
You know, I mean, I have to get their belongings, because basically, you're going to own, you're going to own their property, or something, you know, if he creases it, he's, so we could, I mean, we don't have to go through part of your property, you know what I mean? But the road would be up there maybe where it is, but, you know, if you took a dozer in there, there's no reason you can't put a road in there. You can put a road in about anywhere if you want it, as long as you got a good dozer.
I'm confident of that.
You can do it, you can put it in there yourself, so.
Well, the best case scenario, how long are we looking at now?
Oh, it's moving fast. It's moving fast.
I mean, like, how quickly would they receive their money?
It's hard, I mean, I hate, I don't want to make a commitment to that, but, I mean, I'm looking like maybe, you know, whereas I told you, eighteen months, maybe six, maybe less.
Well, see, every time it rains, I want to go with it.
Mary, you've worked with me on a lot of projects, and we anticipated this taking a long time, and don't you think that it's moving much faster than we?
I'm amazed, and it's for a lot of reasons, you know? And one of those reasons is Dale, y'all's participation, and the, I guess, the fear that loss of human life, or, you know, all sorts of things, that's, that's what's, that's what's moving it along. Yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing.
It's like we're talking about rain, every time it rains. That's why the past couple times, we've had to call to get some help, to get that ditch clean, keep that water from running over top of these rock baskets, running everywhere, destroying everything, and so try to keep that road and this home as stable as we can right now. About every time I call, you know what's happening, somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Has given me war with this opinion on that road.
Yeah, I had about two inches of water in my basin for the other one.
Yeah. Yeah, they were able to fix that in just, just a few minutes, but I call when that happens.
But he's not supposed to be doing anything like that. We was out there that long when I had to call Joe.
I understand.
Yes. Yes, hazard mitigation is completely a voluntary program. That means that all of the participating parties have to volunteer and say that they are willing to do this. There's no condemnation, there's no taking or anything like that. Either they all come together, and it, and this, it would be different if we had a flooding situation, we had flood-prone homes, and they were here, there, and yonder, and if somebody didn't want to do it, that's okay. But you have to, these, the engineer has said it has to be these homes in order for us to mitigate the slide, in order for them to go in and fix the problem, so that it doesn't slip on top of your other residences that are not impacted, they have to use all of this, these properties.
So if one person opts out, it's over.
That's the way we, unless...
Not a hundred percent sure.
I mean, I guess the lesson in engineer was to determine some way that the project could still go on without that property.
Yeah.
That would be the only way I would imagine.
Yeah, there's a couple of properties, you know, that are kind of out on the edge, and it's something we need to look into, and maybe re...
And homeowners can opt out up until the day you receive your check. If you come to pick your check up that day, and you change your mind, you're knocked out.
Wouldn't it be one of those real big checks?
Oh, no, maybe.
You may have to deal with the other homeowner.
Who calls up the agreement? You, or whatever?
Jeff.
For them all to sign, you know what I mean?
Jeff.
Okay. So they all have to sign this thing, like a city damnously, and then, and then that's, so we don't know what kind of thing we're going to have to have until we know if all of them are going to sign it, correct?
That sounds like it.
Now, it'll be down to them before we know the exact numbers.
That's what I'm saying, so, yeah.
But we're still looking at months.
Yes, I would, I mean, you know, I've said eighteen months, and I was obviously wrong about that, so I would hate to say that, and, you know, I, I just can tell you that it's moving much faster than normal, and we seem to really have the attention of the program in Frankfort, and they're really helping us along. And I really need to turn this something in really quick, because they're waiting on me, on this one piece of paper.
How many, how many pieces of paper do you have to get there right now? Is this the only one?
I just need the mayor to send a letter that says how he plans on making his match. And if, you know, I mean, he can make all the plans in the world, and they can fall apart later, but, I mean, we need to send, you know, I mean, obviously, you, you're committing to this, but if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. Would you take it that way, Mayor, that...
Yeah, this is, this is kind of a juggling act.
So once you get these papers signed, they're all, you go to Frankfort, and then goes to Atlanta? Or is there still more hoops to jump?
This is, we've already received environmental clearance, and this was an RFI, and so Atlanta will be reviewing these, this is a packet that I have of stuff that they requested additional. And when I, I'll add this letter to this packet, and it'll go on to Atlanta.
So that package's done, except the letter.
Except the letter, yes. And remember y'all had to come in, sign that additional form that they never told us about?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that's part of this packet.
Yes. Question for you, what kind of time limit do you have to vacate that property?
Ninety days after you sign the agreement. You know, after you, when you get your check.
Oh, okay. I suppose they firm an agreement, well, if they keep that agreement, sixty days before they get them like that.
No, you'll have ninety days to vacate the premises.
All right. Virginia says we've got to make a decision here.
I mean, you can hold it over, but it's just going to delay it, you know, and I'm telling how anxious we are, so we need to get...
What we decide pretty, for the most part, it's probably going to be a one thing inside two, right?
Yeah, we need to know what they're going to do.
You know, I mean, I assume, Mayor Jeff, I assume he can send this letter, and then whichever option he chooses, and then if it changes later...
That's what it sounds like, because what you're saying is, you've got a project that the engineers have said require these specific properties to be involved.
Yes.
If at any time, one of those property owners say, no, we don't, we're not going to agree to sell our property for this, then the whole deal's over anyway, right? So what you do is you pick your option and go forward, and if at some point, somebody decides they're not going to do it, then it's, it's over, right?
I do think...
Or, or if you, yeah, if you say, for instance, let's pick option number one, and we get down close, and we say, geez, we don't have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and we're not going to be able to meet that match, can we then jump to option two?
Probably jump the other way. You probably need to go with option two, and then go back to, because we need to put that on the table with hazard mitigation, unless that's what we're considering. But jumping's a good, you can jump back and forth, but I think you better put it all out there to start with. Because I don't want to spring that on like later.
Oh, we don't have the money, yeah. We know we got the money if we go with option two, option two is what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so...
We recommend going with this.
No, I don't want to recommend, I just want you all to know that, I mean, I think that...
What's our better chance with this? As far as trying to...
Just start.
What do you think, Jeff? Would you, because it is a funding commitment letter.
I mean, I don't see how these property owners would not agree to contribute thirteen percent, get eighty-seven percent of their property paid for, and then on something that is essentially a governmental grant.
The alternative's not good for them.
I would remind you, that the city has tried two other options, and we were turned down. And one was AML, and that was turned down, and we tried, and that was turned down. So, you know, after this, I'm not sure that I have any more dregs in my hat. I mean, I don't know of any more places we can go.
Well, let me, let me recommend that we, that we go with option two, and if we have ability to fund, when we get down to the end, we'll talk about it, and if we do, then we'll, then possibly we could fund all our part of that thirteen percent. You know, if we had an extra, we say, well, geez, we got an extra fifty thousand dollars in bank, they're only going to have to pay eight percent, or something like that. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
How do we manage? How many, at least you got to start with. How many property owners of these, of these nine is in here?
One, two, three, four.
No, but I mean, you're one, that's three, that's three, four. Okay, are you all agreeing with this? Well, I'm just getting an idea, you know, we start somewhere. You know what I'm saying? I'm just wondering, I'm just curious, you know? So if you got nine people, and you already got four of them, so you're already...
You know, two, while one is deceased, so, well, Bob Conley of his property.
I spoke to Ms. Sargent today, who's his executor, and she was in agreement.
And then there's Sue Sherman.
Nine, so you're over to Sue.
Sue Sherman's the next one, she's right side on, between Dale and Tom.
My grand vision, Bob, I say we go to...
And then you got John Shaw.
Well, let me ask, let me ask for a motion for option two, then.
I'll make the motion for option two.
Let's see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we are. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Stand the adjourn.